Good evening and welcome, everybody, to the March 7th Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting. If we could go ahead and call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Here.
Commissioner Coulson?
Here.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Here.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Here.
Commissioner Glennely?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Here.
Everyone is present and it's noted that Commissioner Ward is on our way.
Okay, thank you. If everyone could please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
So we pray to God we pray for peace in Ukraine and around the world. We ask you to guide us and lead us with the pursuit of happiness and liberty. Help us to be kind to one another. Bless this meeting as you will have it to be. In the holy name we pray. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion. Second.
It has been moved and properly second. This evening, instead of having to do a roll call vote, we'll do it by a show of hands, if that's okay with everybody. So, all those in favor?
Motion passed as unanimously.
Thank you. Madam Manager, do we have any public addresses to the board?
There is no one signed up.
Thank you very much. If we can now move on to item number six, items to report. Mr. Rhodes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm going to provide you a little update and some history on our stormwater regulations for the county as we're moving towards now updating those regulations. And those, of course, are mandated through the state. So, take you back several decades with the Clean Water Act that was adopted by the federal government, that happens back in the early 70s. Some other things grew out of that at the federal level, and ultimately, some of these authorities were then passed down to the state, which in turn leads us to where we're at today because the state has in turn put rules in place, adopted legislation that requires certain named jurisdictions such as Pitt County to adopt certain regulations. This started back in 2004 when we first adopted our stormwater management ordinance for nutrient control. This was specific for the Tarpanico Basin. I'll show you in a minute exactly where that was pertained to. Although those rules only pertain to that basin, remember, we have two basins here. About the bottom 40% of the county is actually in the Neuse Basin. The board adopted stormwater regulations for nutrient control with over the entire jurisdiction, the planning jurisdiction for the county. So, we did do a comprehensive approach even though the Neuse Basin within the Tar River at the time, Neuse Basin within Pitt County within the time that we were dealing with it at first even required such. So, we were proactive in that respect, trying to get development to start putting in some of these requirements throughout the entire jurisdiction. Well, that's all changed now with the new requirements. We have both Neuse River and Tarpanico Basin requirements, and we are a named community in both those sets of rules. So, here's your map throughout the county, especially that northern part. That is the Tarpanico Basin. There are specific rules for that. And remember, the two primary nutrients that are controlled through our stormwater regulations would be nitrogen and phosphorus. That is in the Tarpan Basin. The only nutrient that's actually controlled within the Neuse Basin is nitrogen. So, a little bit of a nuance here, but I will tell you, the state's done a better job in making sure that the rules are somewhat consistent within those two basins so they're easier to administer. One other thing I will note on here, there are only certain jurisdictions that are named in the legislation that the state is mandating through the stormwater regs. So Greenville and Winterville are the other two named communities within Pitt County. So, all the other areas that you see for the smaller municipalities and their extraterritorial jurisdictions, it's like a Swiss cheese effect where those areas are not regulated by these stormwater rules. One other hatched area I'll show you that most of you are aware of, as far as stormwater controls and additional requirements that are in place, is our water supply watershed regs. That is a 10-mile upstream area from the water intake area on the Tar River. So, that has extra protection to protect that valuable resource. Just an update on that, you will be seeing those regulations coming back before you in the near future as those are amended as well. So, on forward, again, we have nutrients that are being controlled. One other thing, that deals with water quality. One thing that we're seeking to retain in addition to the mandates is also our water quantity control, and that is through the peak flow requirements. And that gets into how much of the stormwater runs off and how quickly. So, we're seeking to maintain our current peak flow requirements although they're not required by the state. And through the past, I know this board's been encouraged, especially with subdivision activity and other things, to keep the water from running off those sites too quickly. And that's what this helps do. Some of the changes here, there are some changes as far as the nutrient loading levels. And thankfully, the state has also come up with a SNAP tool, and that's a stormwater nitrogen and phosphorus tool that measures the amount based off certain criteria of a development site as to how much the nutrient loadings are. So, those you can see a little bit different in the Neuse versus the Tarpanico. Again, the Neuse only requires nitrogen to be controlled, whereas both nitrogen and phosphorus are controlled in the Tarpanico. And just as an example of some of the features that you'll see, these are current ones that we're inspecting annually now. These are either vegetated swales or wet detention areas. And these help the water to absorb into the ground and the nutrients as well get filtered out before they go downstream. Again, some of the major changes for the developers in our community, the peak flow rate match, it was removed from the rules, but we see a need to keep that. That is the only change, again, I'll stress, that is the only thing that's different than the mandated rules from the state. There are nutrient buy-down provisions. There are mitigation banks where certain properties are held in conservation areas and developers can buy down their nutrient requirements from those areas if need be. To give you an idea of our schedule, staff is prepared to, based on comments from tonight, or we're ready to proceed in submitting this on to the state for their review. This will have to go through our Department of Water Quality, through the Environmental Management Commission, before it comes back to us for adoption and implementation. So, you can see the intended schedule that's on the screen right now. So, with that, Mr. Chair, that's our report on these regulations. And again, we're ready to submit those later this week unless there are some glaring issues that you have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any questions for Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you.
Seeing none, we appreciate the report. Madam Manager.
Yes, I have a few items from your manager's report this evening. To start off first with your meeting dates, next meetings are March 7th, March, well, we are here, and March 21st at 6:00 PM. Wanted to call Mike Brown forward if he would come to the podium and introduce Mike Brown, our new chief code enforcement officer. Mike Brown is our new chief code enforcement officer for Pitt County. He was born here, in this very building, actually, and has lived in Pitt County all of his life. He followed in the footsteps of his father and grandfather by becoming a licensed plumbing contractor and worked in his family business until deciding to seek a position in public service. Mike began his first 10 years of public service with the City of Greenville Inspections Department as a code enforcement officer and rose through the ranks to the position of Chief Building Inspector for Greenville. He then accepted a position with the North Carolina Licensing Board for General Contractors as an investigator covering a territory of over 27 counties, assisting the citizens of northeastern North Carolina by investigating complaints on licensed general contractors as well as complaints regarding the unlicensed practice of general contracting. Following 15 years of service with the board, Mike accepted the chief building inspector position with Edgecombe County and most recently with the town of Winterville. After four years in Winterville, he has now accepted our position with Pitt County Government. He's looking forward to assisting the citizens of Pitt County by helping to provide for the health, safety, and well-being of our residents through clear and consistent enforcement of the North Carolina State Building Codes. With that, I welcome Mike Brown and introduce him to you as our newest member of the Pitt County family.
Thank you for having me. Glad to be here. If I can help you guys any way, please feel free to let me know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to, as my next item, talk to you about a new program I've implemented as manager called Employee of the Month. In an effort to continue to build a culture of celebrating and rewarding good performance, I have created a policy to recognize employees of the month. This isn't new, it's something we had many years ago. But each month of the year, county employees will be able to nominate other county employees who have demonstrated exemplary service in their duties. And then each month, a group of peers randomly selected by human resources who will serve a one-year term will select among those applications who they think should be recognized among their peers. And then we have existing budgeted funds already to reward that employee of the month with $100 check to thank them for their service, and we will bring them forward to the Board of Commissioners at the next monthly meeting to present to you their accomplishments. I've also referenced a digital document called County Connection, which we're going to start putting out. The first one will come out April 13th, and it'll come out about the 15th of every month. And in that County Connection, it'll be a one-page digital document that goes internally to county employees that in the first block on top will welcome all new employees hired that month. In the second block, we'll congratulate those who are retiring from service, and then on the bottom will spotlight our county employee of the month. So, I'm excited about rolling that program out as we continue to feel the energy and gain momentum among our workforce. Fourth thing is a proclamation within the chairman's authority under your policy for recognizing people, places, and events. Your chairman did sign a proclamation recognizing March 2022 as the month celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program, more commonly known as Meals on Wheels. And so, that proclamation has been signed, has been included in your weekly packet or will be next week if it hasn't already, and has gone back out to the Council on Aging as we celebrate this month of Meals on Wheels with them. Fifth item, wanted to make you aware that at a prior meeting, we let you know of our continued partnership and collaboration on economic development matters with the ENC Alliance. And as a result, we transferred a parcel in Indigreen Corporate Park to the Alliance on February 22nd, 2022, in accordance with the board's instructions related to that transaction. Number six, and then I have three more to add after that that are short ones. Number six is NACO, the National Association of Counties, hosts a Healthy Counties Conference. And this year, we are fortunate enough that this national organization is doing it in Wake County, North Carolina, April 6th to 8th of 2022. If you will, please let Kimberly Hines, your clerk, know if you plan to attend. This is not in your regular conference policy, so all of those who let Kimberly know that they desire to attend, I'll include in a budget amendment for, on your consent agenda at your next meeting as a group. But that's a real exciting opportunity to have this national conference hosted here in our own state. Along those same lines, as an item number seven added to your report, NACO, the National Association of Counties, just this week announced their annual conference, which will be in Adams County, Colorado, July 21 to 24. Please also let Kimberly know if you plan to attend that conference. That is within your typical policy, and there is no limit on the number of commissioners who may attend that conference pursuant to budget. As an eighth item, wanted to let you know that back in 2008, at the height of the economic recession, the county manager, at the time Scott Elliott, doing his due diligence, implemented a manager's policy that placed a hiring freeze on all vacant positions. He did that in a, as a cost containment measure at a very uncertain time in the economy to help build back some unused fund balance. So, when there is a vacant position, even if there is full funding for that position, a department and county government now has to wait 30 days to begin even the advertising process, which can then take two to three months beyond that, and we have this extended period of vacancy within county government. Back in the recession, that was helpful because it allowed us to accumulate some lapsed salary money at a time when we needed it. We are now in different times, and that was a manager implemented policy, and unless the board objects, I'd like to lift that freeze. That doesn't mean that anybody can operate or hire a position outside of budgeted funds. But so long as folks are within their budget, I'd like to lift that hiring freeze. And in conjunction, I'd like to announce that with Florida Hardy's assistance, the county will do its first-ever county job fair over at the Agricultural Center, the Mark Owens Auditorium, on April 21st, 2022. And we will work with our Public Information Office for some good leading marketing ahead of that. So, why do I want to do this and why am I announcing this to you? In part because the climate we live in, as most folks are aware, we're having a hard time recruiting and getting folks on board. Right now, the county has a 12% vacancy rate, with 12% of our positions are vacant right now. And it's difficult to carry out mandated services without folks in those positions. So, right now, roughly, that's about 134 to 135 to 140 positions that are vacant in county government right now. And we are a lean county government. We don't have, when a position is vacant, that impacts our ability to provide the best customer service that we can. So, unless the board stops me, I would like to lift that hiring freeze, market a job fair on April 21st, and get some great folks to add to our Pitt County workforce and family going forward and fill some of these positions. And then the last thing, if I could start to queue up, Public Information Office in the back, really had a twofold purpose, and this is just a very short, under-two-minute video that I wanted to share with you this month, highlighting really a twofold purpose. One is to, I am honored to be your first female county manager, and it is Women's History Month, so celebrating women in government. The second thing is I have made a real commitment to enhancing and strengthening the relationships with our municipalities. And since we have two other female managers, if I could ask the Public Information Office to queue up a video that we had a lot of fun making that we'll push out on our digital sites this month, in the month of March. And that should show up on your screens in just a moment.
My name is Ann Wall, and I serve as the city manager for the City of Greenville.
Hi, my name is Terri Parker. I'm the town manager with the town of Winterville.
I'm Janice Gallagher, the Pitt County manager.
I have worked in local government for more than 30 years.
Started my career with the City of Greenville. I was the manager with the town of Bethel, and I've been in Winterville as the manager almost 13 years.
The role of the county manager is one that has been traditionally held by men in a male-dominated profession. Today, I'm the 21st woman to serve as county manager in North Carolina.
When I look at the future of local government, I have to look at where I started. This was not the plan, so I had some really good mentors that helped me decide this is what I wanted to do. And they were all men who taught me that I could do anything I wanted, and this was the kind of work that I needed to be doing.
When I started with Pitt County Government in 1998, there had only been male county managers. Now, 24 years later, I am honored to serve as the first female county manager for Pitt County Government.
I am really excited about being in local government in 2022. I think there are so many opportunities for anybody who wants to come into local government with the idea that you can serve your community, you can have an impact from almost the first day you start.
And I see this as a possibility for so many young people in today's society, as a choice to serve your community and to come and to do really, really good things for the citizens.
There is an excellent opportunity to create a community and an environment that we are so proud to live in for ourselves, our children, and future generations.
And that is all I have for your report this evening.
Thank you, Madam Manager. At this time, would entertain a motion for approval for the items for consent.
Second.
It has been moved and properly second. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Motion passed as unanimously.
Thank you. If we could now move on to items for discussion. Madam Manager.
Yes, this was a follow-up item from your last meeting. You had a public address to the board that expressed concern about enhancing handicapped access to county facilities. In your audience tonight, we have Chris Barnes, the county's risk manager, and you received a memo from him in your weekly packet two weeks ago. So, I just wanted to confirm for the board this evening that the county is and is confident that it is 100% compliant with ADA requirements at all of our county facilities. The question before you this evening is whether or not, or the discussion before you this evening, is whether or not you want to enhance any further access for handicapped or disabled residents to your county facilities.
I have a question.
Commissioner Coulson.
What about the automatic door openers? I know they have it in some places, but not everywhere. At least, I don't think it's everywhere. And that might be something to look at because that is helpful, especially if you're pushing somebody in a wheelchair, I can tell you from firsthand experience.
Chris, can you talk to automatic door openers?
So, those are, okay, those are required. When it's five pounds of pressure, more to open the door. But you're right, it does help folks. So, if that's something that the board would like to see, we could definitely look into it.
At least look to see what the cost of doing it, how many places might be able to, maybe you can't do it all at one time, but maybe we can do it a little bit by at a time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We can look into that and bring back a quote.
I think the word is, is enhance. And, you know, if we can, yes, we are meeting the guidelines everywhere, but if we can enhance what we, what we are doing, that would prove to be very beneficial to our, to our citizens.
Yes, ma'am.
As Tom said about the doors, what about sidewalks, looking at those where maybe they might need to be extended or somewhere, you know, some of that.
Right. What we have right now does meet the guidelines, but like I said, we could always go beyond that, and we can bring some options back to you and go in whichever direction you want to go. And signage is another big one, that we don't have a whole lot of signage, but we could add additional signage saying handicap, entrances this way and stuff like that as well. So, we could bring options back.
Chris?
I'd like to make this chair. So, I agree with Commissioner Coulson's suggestion that we look at the doors. I also think that it was the point made by the gentleman that came to the public addresses a couple, a couple of weeks ago. I think it raises, raises the question whether or not, when we have sidewalks that are, you know, there are a number of places where there are sidewalks, but not necessarily a sidewalk leading from that sidewalk to the county building.
Yes, sir.
I think it'd be a good idea to look at, at those connections, not just for, you know, handicap accessibility, but also just general, generalized accessibility to the public so that we're not, you know, requiring pedestrians to share the right-of-way with a car or walking in grass, which can be problematic, especially if it's, you know, for those that are, that are limited from mobility perspective. So, I, I think it would be good to look at those connections, see what the cost would be on that.
Yes, sir.
And I can, if I may, Mr. Chairman, we have started preliminarily looking at some of that stuff, and Tim Corley isn't here this evening, he's out this week, but he, for example, just to give a ballpark of cost, if you wanted to put sidewalk from Fifth Street up to connect all the way down Hospital Drive and connecting to the circular sidewalk that enters our front county office building here, you're talking in the neighborhood of $55,000 to $65,000 to put that sidewalk in. So, we can certainly bring back recommendations or options, not necessarily recommendations, relating to automatic door openers, sidewalks, signage, and other things that the team might think of. And when I say the team, I'm really referring to Chris Barnes and Tim Corley as our county engineer, and bring that back. The one thing I would suggest is that we take these suggestions and look at incorporating them into your next year's budget. So, I would not recommend pulling it from an immediate basis out of contingency, but if we could get those numbers in advance of budget, which we should be able to bring back to you, then you can decide which of those you'd like us to pursue, and we can incorporate that into your recommended budget for 2223.
At this time, I would entertain such a motion.
I have my hands up.
Oh, okay.
This is the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Please excuse me for interruption, your fast move. From Fifth Street up to this building, is this building in the City of Greenville?
Yes. Yes, it is.
And so, we're going to be spending county money on the City of Greenville?
It's a, it's a private drive.
Huh?
The driveway coming from Fifth Street up alongside the building there, which is talking about, that's our, that's our, our drive, that's a private drive. If you see it labeled, it'll be labeled as a private drive.
Okay.
So, it doesn't belong to the city.
Well, we're going to, you're going to bring back a, a study anyway, so.
Yes, ma'am.
We can talk about that later on.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe that motion, unless there's any other comments, I believe it had been moved in second. All those in favor?
Motion passed as unanimously. I had to, for the record, second it, I had Ms. Ward, Alex, and P. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. If we could now move on to items for decision. Mr. Barnett.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board of Commissioners. I have a quick presentation I'd like to go through about some major projects that a lot of these you've heard of, and we just wanted to give you an update since our CIP meeting back in January. We've made some progress. Tonight, and specifically, we are looking at two main project areas. The first one being with Pitt County Schools, and the second one, I'm kind of combining into one, but it's Pitt Community College and the Sheriff's Office. For the school system, there is a grant that they're looking at applying for, and they have asked us to help with the match. The grant does cover projects at seven of their schools. With the community college and the sheriff's building, we are looking at some type of debt financing to fund both of those projects. So, with Pitt County Schools, they are looking to apply for the needs-based public school capital grant. This is a pot of money set aside in the state, the proceeds of which come from lottery sales. Typically, we don't apply for this grant because historically, the grant has required that for a five-year period, we'd have to forego all of our lottery proceeds, and typically, the money just doesn't work out in that, in our favor. But they have lifted that restriction this year, so the school system would like to apply for it. As with most grants, there is a 15% match. The school system would like for you all to consider that 15% match, and the projects are going to be at Aiden, Creekside, Eastern, Elmhurst, Ridgewood, WH Robinson Elementary, and Winterville Primary. You should have this in front of you, but it's also on the screen. We wanted to show you the actual projects of what is going on in each school. The one theme you are going to see repeatedly through all seven projects, if you may recall, House Bill 90, this is the legislation in the General Assembly that looks at classroom size. We, as a county, have fortunately been able to get a waiver that has allowed us some additional time, but that waiver at some point will run out. But for each project, what I wanted to show you is the actual local match, which is the first number. So, in the Aiden example, the 673,000 is the local contribution, and the 4,237,000 is what the grant would pay if the grant was approved by the state. So, in, at Aiden Elementary, you'd be looking at a House Bill 90 project. It's a classroom wing addition, so we'd be looking at six classrooms, some restroom, support rooms, and improvement to the drop-off area. At Creekside, for 1.4 million, the state would kick in 8.2 million. Again, House Bill 90, it's a classroom addition. Here, they're looking to replace some of the modular units. They'd be adding 12 classrooms, support rooms, and extension of the drop, drop-off and pickup area. At Eastern Elementary, for just slightly under $1 million, and the At Eastern Elementary, for just slightly under $1 million, and the state would kick in $5.5, you're looking at eight classrooms, restrooms, support rooms, fire lane, reconfiguration, and additional parking. I'd like to mention that Creekside, Elmhurst, and Eastern are projects that have been on our CIP. And in the fourth project, in Elmhurst, for again, slightly under $1 million, and we're looking at $5.6 back if the state were to approve it. We'd be looking at four classrooms, an upgrade towards some more energy-efficient windows, some egress for safety, and then they would also be looking to enclose some exterior porches to close in a hallway for additional safety at the school. Then the final three projects, at Ridgewood, you're looking at $1.4 million for $8.1 million, another House Bill 90 project, 12 classrooms, and an expansion of the drop-off and pickup. At WH Robinson, you're looking at $812,000 to get $4.6. House Bill 90, four classrooms, a new media center, and then they're going to take the old media center and expand out the gymnasium. And then finally, at Wintergreen Primary, you're looking at $1.5 for $8.4, 12 classrooms, and extended drop-off and pickup. So you see a lot of the same themes. A lot of these projects you've heard at our CIPs with the school system. We think it's a really good opportunity. Assuming the state were to fund all of these projects, well, excuse me, approve all the projects, we'd be looking at $7.8 million to get slightly under $45 million back from the state. Our folks at the school system said, don't bet on them approving all seven projects, but I will tell you, any one of these projects, if they were to be approved, I think from a dollar standpoint, it's a good deal, considering what if we, if we were to go borrow $53 million, we'd pay more than $7.8 just in interest over 20 years. So if we were to get any of these projects, I think it's a win-win. We'd be looking at our Article 40 and 42 restricted sales tax. This is exactly why we have a fund balance there for these opportunities like this. It's a pretty big number of the fund balance, but considering what we would get in return, I'll take that bet any day. So that's what the schools are looking at. I think right now, they're going through the application with their school board so that they can move forward, and they would like for you all to consider supporting the local match. What are their two big projects, the Pitt Community College and the Sheriff's Building? At the community college, we are looking at the welding building. Right now, we're looking at $14.8 million, and of course, the sheriff's building that we talked about, the CIP, we're looking at a number of about $13.2. Traditionally, we would go after a LOBS, a limited obligation bond for these type of projects, but we would like to explore the option of partnering with some of our local banks. You know, a LOBS goes out on the public market, it's slightly less from an interest standpoint, but right now, with interest rates being as low as they are, and I think if we go with a local bank, they will get highly competitive, I think we will get some good proposals back. I think it's something that we traditionally haven't looked at for large capital projects, and I think it's worth at least looking at. As with all debt, we'll have to bring it back for you all to approve every step of the way, but we would like to look at those as an option. I will tell you, as you already know, the cost of everything is going up due to the pandemic, and then we have some other global issues going on right now, so we hope that 14.8 and 13.2 are going to be good numbers in the next six to 10 months, but there's probably a high likelihood that those amounts will somewhat slightly creep up. So you may see a different number when it's actually time to pull the trigger. And then finally, here's a project that we have talked about quite a bit. We're not really action for any action tonight, but we just wanted to let you all know and the community college know that as we go through the budget process, we are looking at the design costs for the workforce technology building. We're looking to stack it up against all of our other requests as we proceed forward till May to present to you all the next year's budget. So finally, I have two motions. You can do it as one, but the first is to authorize the chairman to sign the documents needed to support the grant match for Pitt County Schools' grant application, and then the second motion would be continued commitment to explore the local bank loan financing for the Pitt Community College's welding building and the sheriff's administration building.
Brian, I do have one question in regards to the Pitt County Schools' application. If we were not to get these grants, this is something that we would essentially be on the hook for in the foreseeable future, right?
At some point in time, yes. These products have been on the CIP, and until they're funded or something else comes up, these projects will still be out there.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on Mr. Barnett's presentation, or if not, certainly entertain a motion?
No, I mean.
Second.
Okay, it has been, Mr. Coulson?
No.
It has been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Looks like you're up again.
I am. You all may recall, last year in our budget, we included in the EMS fund an opportunity we call the tier system, that our EMS squads could come back and tap into some additional funding as needed. As we have moved through this fiscal year, we have had several requests from those EMS funds to use that system. The tier system was based on their size and their annual budgets. On the January 13 EMS Oversight Meeting, we as staff recommended to fund all EMS squads their tiered system contingency funding, and technically, because it's contingency money, it requires a budget amendment, and you all have to approve it before we can send any funds to them. So this was part of the budget. I do think there is a need, as the cost of everything has gone up, and the EMS Oversight Committee voted unanimously to make this recommendation to you.
Second.
Any discussion? It's been moved in second. Madam Court, actually, all those in favor, raise your hand.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Singleton.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. It's your last meeting. If you remember, I came before you with a proposed amendment to our Pitt County Animal Services Comprehensive Ordinance. This board voted eight to one to approve that amendment, and because it was not a unanimous decision, it requires a second reading. This ordinance now comes before you in its second reading, and if approved, it would include in the ordinance a definition of domestic animal as shown on page 420 of the ordinance.
Any further discussion?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Motion passes eight to one.
Thank you.
For the record, I had Melvin and Commissioner McLaughlin, I didn't catch the second.
I did second.
Got it, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Fitzpatrick, Commissioners, Manager Gallagher. Tonight, I bring you a decision, item for decision for Kelly Andrews with Pitt County Economic Development for interlocal agreement with the town of Aiden for rail site development. Pitt County Economic Development has been working with the town of Aiden and other partners to develop a rail-serve site in Aiden. The town of Aiden has agreed to be the grantee for a $500,000 NC railroad grant. Pitt County Economic Development is asking for the board to approve the budget amendment for the $333,333 grant match. Pitt County will ask for that money to be repaid upon sale of the property, unless the county forgives the repayment as part of an incentive package for an industrial project. The recommendation is to authorize negotiation of the interlocal agreement with the town of Aiden for the rail site development, authorize county manager to act on the agreement, and approve the budget amendment.
I make a motion that we authorize that negotiation.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Broom slash Andrews, you're up again.
Great. Thank you. I bring you a second item tonight for Ms. Kelly Andrews, who is unable to attend tonight. And this item is for a contract for preliminary engineering work for Economic Development Administration, EDA grant. Pitt County Economic Development is requesting an exemption for the Mills, for the Mini-Brooks Act, as the contract is under $50,000, and the firm has prior knowledge of the project. We need the preliminary engineering report and environmental documentation before the EDA's grant date of March the 15th. The recommendation is to approve the exemption from the Mini-Brooks Act for the contract, the contract with payment from the Pitt County Economic Development Funds, and have Chairman Fitzpatrick sign the contract.
Thank you. At this time, entertain. It has been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Madam Manager.
Yes, the next series of items are all appointments that begin on page 90 of your agenda pack. The first one is recommendation to make reappointments to the Pitt County Nursing Home and Adult Care Community Advisory Board, as set forth on page 90. The recommendation is to reappoint Mr. Ernest Lee, Ms. Gloria Brewington-Person, and Mr. Christopher Woods to serve at the Pitt County Nursing Home and Adult Care Community Advisory Board.
Move, approve.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Motion passes unanimously.
The next is an appointment to the Winterville Planning and Zoning Board. The town of Winterville is requesting the Board of Commissioners appoint Mr. Henry Hostetler to the Winterville Planning and Zoning Board as the ETJ representative. If appointed, Mr. Hostetler will serve a full term that expires June 30, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Motion passes unanimously.
Your third one is a motion found on page 108. Farmville Town Council revised the makeup and bylaws of the Farmville Planning Board to include only one county ETJ representative to be appointed to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. Previously, there were two. Farmville Town Council is recommending Mr. Dana Harrell serve as the ETJ representative on the Farmville Planning Board. If appointed, Mr. Harrell would serve a full term that expires March 7, 2025.
I say, second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Motion passes unanimously.
And your last appointment for this evening is an appointment to the Pitt County Board of Adjustment. Ashley Moore resigned on November 3, 2021. The individual selected to replace Mr. Moore will serve an unexpired term that expires January 1, 2024, and will serve as an alternate member. So you have an applicant interest listing attached in your board package of names to consider. If the board will select one. Your choices from your listing are Robert Scheck, Sharon Gray, Carl Chipman, Mary Holdeman, Jackie Hinton, or Richard Pitt. And those are the applications that have been on file. If you would like, you can select one of those names or direct us to advertise further.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. We can now move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Ward.
No, no comments, and I apologize for being late, and I'll try to explain it later. This is not.
I want to say, I want to also talk about Women's History Month, and I'm really.
I'd like for Commissioner Huggins to speak up, but we'd like to hear what she says.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good afternoon. I just want to also speak to Women's History Month, and we're just so honored to have our first county manager, a female, so I just want to say that, and all the other women in government.
Mr. Bryce, sure.
That was a terrific video. Thank you, thank you for getting that together, and I appreciate the history and also the level of cooperation that it showed between our entities. And I would like to say, I was part of the very large and proud contingent from Pitt County that went to Sanford on Saturday and saw the Farmville Central men's and women's basketball teams win the regional championship once again, and they will both be playing in Chapel Hill this Saturday. I think the women are at noon at the Dean Dome, and the men's game follows. So we look forward to bringing home the championships once again.
Thank you. Commissioner White?
Since it is, or you have just recently signed the proclamation for the 50th anniversary of the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program, or Meals on Wheels, I would like to recognize a guest in our audience who does Meals on Wheels every week with the Aiden Rotary Club, that's Ms. Paula Lofton. So thank you. Since you're here, I wanted to say hey, and that's it.
Commissioner White?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wanted to take a moment and reflect and offer words of support for any of the residents of the Ukraine that may live in our community and offer a word of support for anyone that stands, stands, sorry, it's a little emotional, but that is put in a position of having to sacrifice their lives, like so many have, for the interest of democracy and civility and the world order that we've been able to benefit from so often. And I would like to, for this board to consider, as a show of support for immigrants and residents and the people of Ukraine here and abroad, and also our servicemen and women that currently serve, to consider a resolution of support for the people of Ukraine, and also consider an internal review about any purchasing that county is currently obligated under to, that may circle back to the Russian Federation under the leadership of Vladimir Putin. I'd like to bring that back before the board at our next regular meeting, and would hope that we could get any support for such an item. That'll be it.
Commissioner Perkins, wait.
I'm going to be quick in support of what Chris, Commissioner Nunley just said. I was reading, as you know, I serve on NACO board, and they have a shields up, meaning that all organizations and companies back up your stuff on the, because the impact of what's happening in the area may impact, so that was one of the things that NACO said that we should be concerned about, and that's a quick one. And maybe we can put it on the website, because there is some things on it, if you all think so, or the manager thinks it's all right.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. I say we wanted to echo what Chris Nunley has brought out in reference to my prayer. I think it's very important that we support the people of Ukraine and that this proclamation would certainly serve as a sentiment of our concern. And I just think that if we look at this internally, to not, to put ourselves in this situation is very hard-taken, and I certainly would like to see peace in this world rather than war, and I think this would certainly amplify what we are concerned about. The second part I wanted to bring up is the proclamation that we presented to J. H. Rose High School football team last week. They were very appreciative, and they said to echo this to the Commissioners, that this highlighted, and the children and the parents were very enlightening when this was presented. So they wanted me to bring back to you all, to thank you for all that you did in terms of recognizing these magnificent players. Thank you.
Commissioner Coulson? Well, at 6:55 PM, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
It has been moved and properly second. All those in favor?